Thank you for starting the meeting. I'd like to call to order this December seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting of Norwalk Shellfish Commission. The chair notes that there's not currently a quorum. I'd also like to note that in the announcement for this meeting, it was stated that this is a special meeting of the Norwalk Shellfish Commission. It's not. It's just our regular first Thursday meeting. Looks like that might have been a typo, a copy paste kind of thing. Attendance has been taken?
It has thus far, yes.
Thanks so much, Bill. Have no approval of the minutes without an additional commissioner, so we'll move on. A public comment, we do have three attendees, one of whom I see is Mr. Baycheck. If the moderator could please move Mr. Baycheck into the regular meeting, that would be great. If the other two attendees would like to be recognized, please raise your hand electronically to be recognized.
And I'll put Jim in as I'm gonna unmute him so that he can talk when he's ready to.
Wonderful. I do see a couple of hands not related to the attendees. Maybe John Hiltz, if you could just go first, something going on? You're muted, John?
Nice to you. Sorry, I thought you wanted my hand up.
No, no, it's just the public attendees.
All right.
And hands are down now, so let's move through to the treasures report, please, Bill.
Sure, at the end of November, the balance remained at twenty-six thousand seven hundred eight dollars and seventeen cents. No activity for the month. That'll change for December, of course, but through November, it's the same.
Have we made our final collection from Fisherman's World?
No, I'm gonna go down one more time for the end of the year.
Wonderful, wonderful. And Bill, maybe we could talk about the reorder of the permits? I know that you discussed that the maps are fine for twenty twenty-four.
I believe so, yeah. I think we have plenty in store.
Wonderful. No secretaries report other than to note that several items on the agenda and I was confused about a couple of them, but the agents are here to hopefully clear that up. And Jeff is here because I think at least one of them went before the Harbor Management Commission. Still seeing no quorum. I will move forward to committee reports, Bill, again, please, Department of Health.
Sure, for the month of November, total rainfall was two point five inches. Last year, it was three point oh two inches. Historically, three point five inches. We had one closure on November twenty-second due to rainfall. There were no reported bypasses for the month.
Haven't had many. Someone's doing something right.
I guess. That's ending my report.
Thank you so much. There's no one here from Waste Water, Mayor's Water Quality Committee. So there was no meeting today. It's my understanding through Bill that his honor will be appointing a new chair sometime between now and first of the year such that the first Thursday, six o'clock meeting would take place. Any changes to that, Bill, since that communication?
None. I haven't heard from the mayor's office as to where they're at with appointing someone. What I will do is probably sometime middle of next week, I'll inquire again to get a status. I'm really hoping that we can have something so that we can start up those meetings again for January. So I will continue to pursue that and keep you appraised.
Thank you, sir. There's a lot going on. We discussed permits of police. Thank you for being here, Sergeant Poseckley.
Hey, guys. How you doing? All quiet on our end. We just got the notification to reopen all the shellfish flags and whatnots. We'll take care of that tomorrow. And yeah, like I said, it's nothing really going on. Water temp's right now like forty-one, forty-two. So things are winding down, obviously.
For sure. Thank you so much, sir. Advisory and Sergeant Poseckley's covered that. It's forty-one Fahrenheit, Norwok Harbor Management Commission. I still see Jeff's icon here. Jeff, would you like to report?
Well, just briefly, you know, the big projects that we have been involved with and continue to be involved with are the Walk Bridge Project and the Eversource project to relocate the electric cables. And we've been checking the DEEP website to see at what point DEEP will will issue a public notice seeking comments on the on the Eversource application to drill under the harbor and underneath the visitor's dock. That's not been posted yet. Actually, I didn't check today or yesterday, but that has not been posted. And when it is, then there'll be an opportunity for public comments. And it will also be an opportunity for petitioning for a public hearing. So we'll keep our eyes open to that. And just, and I know this is a little bit off the topic, but I don't know if you've been following the controversy to the east of us in Fairfield and into Bridgeport where United Illuminating is proposing to remove the, one of its select transmission lines from the railroad catenary structure and relocate them on these very high monopoles that will follow the south side of the rail line. And a question that's been asked is, what is Eversource's intention? Because Eversource's service area is from, you know, west of Fairfield through, through through to Greenwich. And should we be expecting that Eversource in the near future is gonna be relocating the transmission line and there'll be large monopoles through on the south side in Norwalk? But it's not directly affecting the harbor, of course, because the electric line will be underneath the harbor in Norwalk. And then the other, the other big question, the other big issue, of course, is the proposed zoning rewrite, as it's called, including the waterfront rezoning categories. That was provided to both DEEP, what was provided was the proposal to both DEEP and to the Harbor Commission, I think it was about thirty-five days ago, prior to the first public hearing, which was on the which was the night before last. So there were two hearings held by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, you know all this stuff. I'm just repeating it, I guess. Last night and the night before, to hear public comments, the Harbor Commission had held a special meeting at the end of November. And the commission approved a motion to request a reasonable extension of the comment period. Our understanding of the comment period was going to close after last night's meeting. And we felt that it was reasonable and appropriate to request an extension of the period so that the Harbor Commission could have the benefit of DEEP's response, DEET's response to the zoning proposal, and also whatever comments were made last night and the night before. So we submitted a letter requesting the extension of the comment period. The Planning and Zoning Department objected to that. And last night, I guess it was brought up and they they agreed to extend the comment period till ten AM tomorrow morning, Friday morning, which does not give the Harbor Commission a chance to have another meeting to provide comments on the waterfront proposals and and the other proposals to the zoning that affect the harbor. I guess that's unfortunate. We did not have the benefit of the DEEP comments were not provided until Monday of this week. So we did not have a chance as a commission to look at those comments and formulate responses. So individual members of the commission can submit their own personal comments, but we can't submit the comments as a commission, which in my opinion is very unfortunate. And it's not clear whether, what the restrictions are on the comment period and why planning and zoning could not have extended the comment period. It may even allow us to have the next meeting on the twentieth of December or a special meeting with the Shellfish Commission to discuss the zoning changes. So now all that's left is for individuals to submit comments by ten AM tomorrow morning. Over other aspects of it, but I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you for letting me speak about this, Steve.
Thank you very much, Jeff. And in full disclosure, I will submit my personal commentary, not as chair of this commission, but just from my own desk.
Thank you.
Thank you. So still seeing no quorum present. We cannot approve the committee reports as presented, so we can move on to business. Is anyone here representing either the LWRD application on Sheffield Island or the Seawall COP?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Jerry Tony. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my pretty face up on there, but I am here.
Okay, so very welcome. Would you like to present anything from either one? Obviously, the COP isn't immediately under our jurisdiction, but as a courtesy to Chairman Dr. Pino of the Harbor Management Commission's Application Review Committee, we do submit comments to him.
We have presented our plans and operations to Dr. Pino, and he has since on behalf of the Harbor Commission submitted a letter of approval and endorsement to the state of Connecticut DEEP.
Right, and how about the LWRD? Is that a pre-app? Is it something totally outside the Seawall?
No, it's part of the requirement for the Seawall.
Okay, so we had it as two line items. That's just my confusion.
No, I'm a bit of a rookie at this. I've been under the tutelage of Mr. Hiltz, thank God. But although I'm representing the Seaport, he is not in this case, but he's been very helpful. But one of the requirements for the application for the certificate of permission is to submit that document, which I completed as much as I could and, of course, forwarded it to you for your approval and signature.
Right. So, I mean, we can't authorize it tonight without a quorum. And I guess we table it for next month. And maybe just later in this meeting if, in fact, our missing commissioner tonight does appear. So I apologize for that, Jerry.
Okay.
Seventeen Sylvester is on the agenda, but that's been completed. Thank you, Mr. Hiltz, for your patience with that one. Eighteen Tonetta still requires a site inspection, which has not been done. And that needs to be coordinated with Harbor Management. Jordan let us know last night that he is in town a couple of days a week and could sneak out at a low tide. It's just something at this point in my life is quite difficult. I really like to get that one off the book, so to speak.
I appreciate it, Steve. We're all busy. You know, don't worry about it. I mean, you get to it when you get to it. I understand.
We'll get there. Thank you, John. One thirty-two Water Street. Mr. Baycheck is in attendance, and this, if I am following correctly, Jim, per your email, that this is two. They are separated, that there is a COP and a pre-app, or am I wrong again?
No, that's correct, Steve. We submitted a COP application to DEEP say maybe about three weeks ago or so, maybe a month by now. And that was for modifying the existing docks in the, what we call the South Basin, which is adjacent to the Ishota Yacht Club. We're also gonna be adding a marginal dock along the face of the bulkhead where there's no dock there, but DEEP is allowing us to do that under a COP application. We're also submitting a structures dredge and fill application for the rest of the property to add docks and slips that would be rented. So that is a change from what the, that section of the property has been used traditionally in the past. Traditionally, I'm sure you're all aware that it's been used for mooring, you know, shellfish boats and, you know, it's more of a commercial side of things. And so that will be a change, so that requires a structures dredge and fill application by DEEP. So if you allow me to share some plans, I could show you.
Yeah, please do, Jim. So what went in front of the Harbor Commission meeting on the fifteenth of November? That was only the COP portion?
That's correct. Yeah, I did mention during that meeting that we are applying, you know, with a structures dredge and fill and that we would be sending out, you know, the consultation forms, but that's as far as we went with that part of it.
Okay, Jim, I'm following you now. Yeah, please, put it up. I mean, Pete and I would definitely like to see it.
Okay. Okay, do you see what I've got on the screen?
No, sir.
How are you allowing us to?
You should be able to just hit share screen on your end and it should.
Yeah, I don't have a shared screen thing here.
I'm sorry, Bill. Did you bring Jim as a panelist?
He is now, yeah.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Usually on the bottom, there's a button for sharing the screen, but I don't have that on mine. Maybe it's because I'm here as a, am I here as a panelist or an attendee?
Well, I just tried it again. I put you in as panelist. Go ahead and try it again.
Okay. Okay, now I'm here as an attendee and I can share the screen.
Okay, great. Sorry about that.
Yeah. Okay. What's happened there?
That's working, Jim.
Okay. Do you see sheet one that I have on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, let me scroll down. Okay. This, okay, this is the South Basin that I was telling you about. That's the existing conditions. The one thing we are gonna do there, well, this shows the proposed COP conditions for that South Basin. The one thing we're gonna be doing is the access ramp that's over by Ishota. Under the COP, it's three feet wide. But under this structures dredge and fill application, we're requesting it to be three and a half feet wide. So that is the only thing that we're gonna be requesting on that side of the property. On the north end of the property, we're gonna, we're asking for a ramp, a new ramp, three and a half by thirty feet long, and then this long shoreline ramp, I mean, a float system which will be five feet wide by two hundred and fifty-eight feet long. And that will extend all the way to within ten feet of the federal channel. We're also proposing along the the face of this part of the shoreline, another float with finger floats extending out, which will be no further than ten feet from the federal channel. And here's the rest of that part of the COP where you've got an access ramp and two more finger floats. And that's what the application's about.
Thanks, Jim. So what mix of boat sizes and the number of boats is anticipated for the structure?
Okay, let me go to another other screen for that. Okay, this is kind of a general setup. And let me explain this a little bit. This was our initial thought on what to do. This area here that I have circled.
It's not yet showing, Jim.
Oh, it's not? I'm surprised. Oh, share screen, got it. Okay, see that?
Yes.
Okay. So in what we're calling the South Basin, where we've got a circle with the COP, this was the arrange, the new arrangement that we're thinking about doing under the COP. We're also thinking about, we're hoping that DEEP would allow us to put this float in on the north side under a COP, but they decided that since it was gonna be a change of type of use, that it needed to be undergo a structures dredge and fill application review. And then the area along the, closer to the federal channel is over in this area. So this shows you an idea of how many slips to answer your question, Steve, that we were thinking about allowing here. This section along the north new dock system would be six more slips. And they were thinking about the boat size being somewhere in the twenty to twenty-eight foot range. You know, not big boats, just local people, you know, with their power boats, which would be rented out. You know, the slips would be rented to them. And then along the the face of this part of the property, there would be two, four, six, eight, ten, ten more slips. In the South Basin, we aren't proposing to increase the number of slips any. I've got a, another plan that shows that we would have twenty-three slips in this area. Basically, this is the plan for the north side of the property. As far as six plus ten. So that would be sixteen more.
It's a nice project, Jim, and a net increase in slips in the harbor is a wonderful thing from this commission's perspective. Regarding the far east side against the federal channel, obviously, this isn't drawn to scale or anything, but one would say that the bows of those boats would not extend beyond the finger slips?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the tree here. What we're proposing as far as the length of those floats varies somewhat. Anywhere from twenty-one to, I think, twenty, about thirty feet would be the longest slip. The longest float would be this one on the far northern side. And then these floats would be this one would be a couple of feet shorter and then subsequently a couple more feet shorter on these other ones.
And they would all terminate in piles?
Yes.
Okay. How many new piles? Any idea? I mean, I can see one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six out there.
Yeah, there'd be six there. The northernmost long float would be attached to the existing piles along that shoreline. So that section wouldn't require any new piles. Obviously, the rearrangement of floats in the South Basin will require removing existing piles and then putting in new piles in new locations. That would involve one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight piles in total.
Is there a restroom facility planned, landword of this work?
Yeah, let me show you a plan that we have on that. Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. Again, here's the South Basin area. The office and restrooms will be right next to it, this area. And parking is over here. There's also, Ishota Yacht Club rents essentially all of the dock spaces here in the South Basin. And many of their members park on their own property, and then they just walk over. It's a area here where they can walk through. So, you know, there's plenty of parking. There's also parking over in other parts of the property.
Very interesting. Pete and Jeff, do you have any questions for Jim?
I don't wanna go ahead in front of Pete, ahead of Pete, but when
It's okay, Jeff.
I do have a couple of questions.
Please, sir.
Jim, how did you determine the ten-foot setback from the federal channel? Is that what it is now?
Yes, it is. And I could show, it's a permit that was issued by DEEP in two thousand and ten, specified that the finger floats over by the Ishota dock system. You know, that's shared with them, not be any closer than ten feet from the channel. So that's, that's the rule of thumb that we're using, based on the DEEP permit and Army Corps, of course, too.
It's very interesting, and not to take everybody's time this evening, but earlier today, Dr. Pinto and I, John is the Application Review Committee Chair, had a meeting with a representative of the Corps of Engineers to discuss the Section four oh eight permit process, Jim, that you know. And the Corps has agreed that the the city of Norwalk and the Harbor Commission would be acting as the representative of the city, as the local non-federal sponsor of the federal navigation project will be involved in the Section four oh eight permit review in a sort of formal way, a formal process that we're writing up now. And so it will be, it will be the responsibility that the Corps will seek a statement of no objection from the Harbor Management Commission with respect to every every private project, and I guess state project too, that requires a Section four oh eight review. So when you submit this application to the Corps, you may get a response that you need a Section four oh eight permit as well because you're within the normal setback distance that's normally established for a ten-foot deep channel. So in this instance, there are compelling reasons, probably because the stuff has been there for a long time. But I'm just bringing up this Section four oh eight review, where every project in the vicinity of a of a federal navigation project is going to go through this review and we're working out the the local procedure now to deal with the Corps, or, you know, to be involved with the Corps process. So that's, I just point that out. So when you submit your, when this gets submitted to the Corps regulatory, you know, a decision will be made on the requirement that you may have to get a four oh eight permit. That's one comment. And then the other, the other thing is So this, these new slips will be operated as a commercial marina i- it them. Is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
And and then so so you would have upland facilities, like Steve was mentioning, a bathroom and some service facilities that would be. Provided to to provide service for the patrons of the marina. Is that, that would be part of this too?
Yes, yes, definitely. And uh, just to make a comment about the four oh eight process of. Uh, Jeff, I'm very well familiar with it and have been involved in other projects uh, that require that, so. I do know that we're gonna have to go do that coordination with the Corps.
But and then the the interesting thing now that we talked about today is we're we're gonna develop a a formal written process for how that will work in Norwalk and how the. Both the Harbor Master, Harbor Commission and the Harbor Master will be, will be involved in that. Anyway, it it I I just bring that up, that we're we're working on the written process now and how, how that, how this will. Because I think what will be required is 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 the Harbor Commission. Uh, we'll we'll have to pu- have a formal letter. Uh, to the Corps, which they call a statement of no objection, actually a S O N O, which is interesting, statement of no objection. Uh, so it's got some relevance to Norwalk anyway. Um, but but we're working on that process now and and this, this. Your, this project may be one of the first to go through this, this formal process that we're developing with. The Corps, but I I'll stop talking now. You 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 understand it, Jim.
Yeah, and you know, I'm 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 very glad to hear what you're saying because. This section four oh eight process uh, is is rather ill-defined and. Many municipalities don't really understand what what to do with it.
So that was the purpose of our meeting today, which is very, so it's timely. That was the purpose of our meeting, to better define it. And and to and to and to develop a this uh, written procedure for how it will, how it will be, how it will be implemented. Not not just in Norwalk, but the other towns too.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that.
I got a couple of questions. You still going, Jeff?
Yeah.
No, no, I you 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 should go ahead of me. Uh, I'm sorry to jump ahead.
No, no problem. Um, I see it, it's commercial marina. How about the the uh? I know they do dock building. And floats and everything. Where is that area?
Um, right where they still ha- have their facility, they they still have. I think it's two or three years of of lease of that area uh, to go before they either have to renew the the lease. Or or move their dock building facility elsewhere.
So they're not gonna move it here?
Uh, they don't have any current plans to do so. You know, um, I guess all options could be on the table later on, but right now. You know, they're well-established where they are with their dock building and, you know, they still have an active lease in place.
Okay, just wondering, because there's only. What? Three sections down, that's about it.
Right, right, but uh, yeah, um, I'm I'm sure you're aware that, you know, this. Uh, property has new owners now. Uh, and it's no longer, um. You know, Pill of Bloom Shellfish, it's now one thirty-two Water Street LLC. And uh, you know, Gary and Ted are the principal partners in this uh, endeavor.
Yeah, Gary and Off Seasons, isn't it?
Yeah. I don't even know, I don't know if Gary ever has an off-season.
No, I said All Seasons is the other.
Oh, all, all seasons, yes, Ted O'Neil with All Seasons.
Because they're losing Westport.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I have another question, Pete, you said, okay, if I ask one more?
Go right ahead.
What do you want, Jeff?
Uh, I couldn't, couldn't. Couldn't figure out how to make my phone work here. Uh, Jim, do you, you need, if if you're gonna. Provide service facilities for for the commercial marina. Do you need planning, do you need a planning and zoning approval and have to go through a coastal site plan review? For for the, for the upland part of this?
I'm not privy to that, uh, Jeff, um. I've been asked to just do the, you know, the permitting for their water-related activities. I guess that would be a question for the owners.
Alright. Because if you're, but 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 you're definitely proposing though that there would be. Upland support facilities for for a commercial marina operation for for this.
Yes, this, yeah, what I'm showing on on the plan here, um, was. I prepared this in 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 my consultation with the owners.
Tha- thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
That's pretty much it, um. I'm still open for questions, but uh, that's, that's what we're planning on doing.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for the clear presentation on this, Jim.
Okay, you're welcome.
And um. We have draft zoning regs. I just wanna get through that since it was on the um, agenda. Um, Jeff spoke to it already in his report for Harbor, and I again mentioned that uh. I will make personal comments in that regard as well. Um, so unless there are any questions about that, Pete, I'll I'll just move on uh, to Mr. Ryder for thirty-two Shore Haven. Please, Tom.
Uh, good evening, I'm a biologist with Lantec. Representing Dr. Rose at Thirty-Two Shore Haven, where he is proposing a residential dock. I have the plans here, which I will be um, sharing with you. I believe you can see my plans now, correct?
Yes, thank you.
You're all familiar with the property area. This is the Shore Haven, the bridge is here, and um, Shore Haven thirty-two is here. Um, we are proposing a residential dock. Now, the owner did not want it to be um, uh, really long or really intrusive or anything like that. He just wanted to have um, some access to water. Uh, so you'll see that we don't have access to full, uh, the tidal uh, flow, just. Uh, just parts of it. This is uh, the the main, sorry, the fixed uh, pier here. Now, this is Meanlo way over here. This is about ninety-six feet apart, so um. As you know, the D E P allows us to go to Meanlo Water for the fixed pier and then outward. Um, he did not really want that, so we are actually ninety-six feet shorter than um. What would normally be, you know, designed. Um, then we have a ramp and a and a float with a with a boat lift. Um, so, uh, and then really, um. Best way to present this is in the profile view here, we have the the ramp and the floats. And then in the plan view, um, it's all shown here. Um, the grades are fairly shallow here, uh, like again, which which is the reason for the uh, the boat lift. Uh, this is a pretty standard design and and layout, so there really isn't too much else to say at this point, so. I think, um, just turned over to questions at this point.
Well, thanks, Tom. Um. We would certainly sight inspect, um, but I notice here that the. Distance to the property line, the shortest is between the float and that extended riparian line. It's like, oh, let's say eleven feet.
Yes, we are getting a a a, I'm a um, letter from the neighbor to the east. That uh, we'll we'll compensate for that.
Okay, and uh, this hasn't been brought in front of Harbor yet, or it has?
No, I'm I'm on that in the next Wednesday, the twenty-second, I guess, two Wednesdays.
Gotcha, okay, no, great. So that letter could be ready by then.
I'd like to ask a question, uh, how close are you to uh, uh? Sprite Island docks?
Uh, how are, how far away from Sprite Island? This dock here?
Yeah.
Well, let me, um.
Oh, you're over here?
I'm over here.
Oh, okay.
So then there's the whole bridge here and then the Sprite Island dock.
Oh, so you're on the inside?
We're over here, right here, yes. You still want me to calculate the distance? I can probably.
No, no, the other thing is, is that, are there any oyster beds there?
There is, um, natural beds are mapped in this entire area uh, here. Um, but there are no um, commercial or recreational beds.
Okay. Just checking for the oysterman.
Yep.
Any questions for Tom, Jeff?
No, no, no questions now, Steve, thanks for asking.
You're welcome.
Is that considered Westport?
No, uh, two houses over, I believe, is Westport, because we're also working at Fifty Shore Haven, and that's in Westport, so. I mean, it's either the next property or the next property over, but there, that's where the border is.
Yeah, okay.
This is considered Norwalk.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Um, just uh, thinking out loud and just for uh, the agents here to keep in view. Um. Thinking about proposing, uh, if I can get a quorum. Uh, the same day as the Harbor Management Meeting or maybe a day before. Uh, depending on schedules, I'd I'd really like to have a quorum. On a day we can clear these things from our twenty-twenty-three plate. So uh, just keep an eye out uh, for that, um, if you could, uh, Tom, Jerry, Jim, and I think, uh, John left. Any other new business, Pete?
Hey, thank you all for your time. Appreciate the evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom, thank you. Anything new, Pete?
I don't know if you call it new business, but uh. The Harbor Master boat. Flash uh, shellfish boat.
Yes.
Uh, it hasn't had any engine work or anything done in two years. I think we need it to get pulled and checked over.
Hmm, I haven't spoken with Bruce. I mean, I know that he did a lot of other things. Uh, but I don't know anything about the uh, engine work or lack thereof. Have you spoken with him?
I've spoken to the Marine Police and they said, uh. Something's leaking somewhere, I think they said. And uh. On the engine. So, and we haven't had the boat hauled or power washed or anything, so.
Yeah.
And it's come down to wax, so I think it needs a maintenance.
Justin, can you add any color to that?
Yeah, so there was, um. There was a small oil slick come off the back of it, and I know Bruce called Billy Landon. He believes that it was most likely the uh. Tilt motor, um, but it has not been hauled. I agree that it probably does need some service. I don't know the last time it's been serviced. And I think it's probably definitely due for at least the oil change, probably some other, you know, general maintenance.
Yeah.
We're kind of, we're we're using it a little bit right now for the bridge project, um, because our main boat is. At a service, getting repowered, and then our other, um, rib is out of the water right now, so. We're kind of using it, but uh, we're filling the fuel up and everything as we as we go, but we definitely think there should be some maintenance on it for sure.
So would would you wait for your repowering to be finished and uh, to haul the small boat?
Um, I mean, wh- whatever you guys need to do on it, it's, you know, that's totally your prerogative. We'll, we will get by with whatever, uh.
I won't take it out of the water until uh, you're comfortable, Justin, for sure, no.
Yeah, till you get your other.
At the same time, I I that, I I think it it should get checked out soon and later, just to make sure that everything, all the all the levels are where they should be for the oil.
Okay, um.
I don't know how you guys wanna schedule that with, um, I mean, I'm sure the marinas are getting ready to close for a few weeks, probably around end of December, so.
We got that here.
Like mid-January.
Isn't it All Seasons?
Yes.
Yeah, I think All Seasons does the Harbor.
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know what their service schedule is like, though, as far as when they're. When they're closing for a few weeks.
Steve, you still got some pull?
Uh, not really. Um. Yeah, let's uh, make some calls and uh. Get that addressed, and we wouldn't wanna lose the uh, power trim and tilt unit for uh.
No.
Lack of oil. It's probably has a seal that's going, which means it needs to be replaced.
That's my thought, and we're, so we're keeping the motor in the water right now, obviously, because of the water temperature and the air temperature, so the tilt motor is not being used. Um, and there's been, the the guys haven't reported any more oil coming off of it the past couple days, so I think it's probably. It resulted the tilt motors, my guess, but I am far for boat mechanic.
No, no worries. Thank you for that. Okay.
That's all I have.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Pete, and thanks, Justin, for uh, the clarity. Um, unless there is anything else, um. Really can't take a motion to uh. Adjourn, but uh. We certainly could do so. Anything else, Jeff? Bill?
Uh, sure, if you're, if you're ready, Steve, absolutely.
Okay, so uh. Just like to wish everybody a wonderful uh, holiday season. Um, maybe we can pull off a meeting before the end of the month. Um, happy Hanukkah for those celebrating tonight and Merry Christmas for those celebrating soon. And I'll see everybody soon.
Same go.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, best to everyone, fair holidays.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright, good night, everyone.
Bye.